To the January 7th, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this public meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting can be viewed via Falmouth Community Television. And also real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. Introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chair of the board. With us tonight, we also have Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, Scott Zalinski, who is a full voting member, Mary Berry, who is an associate member, James Morse, who is an associate member. We also have Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley Demello, who is the recording secretary for the night. Also with us is Justin Shanahan from the Falmouth IT Department and our friends at FCTV helping us televise tonight. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and also from the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. We ask that public comment should be directed only at the project. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The board recently adopted amended rules regarding public comment. For those wishing to speak can utilize the Zoom virtual software and a link to that is available at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. From there, you'll be in the attendees list at the appropriate time during the hearing. We will open it up to public comment. We will ask you to hit the raised hand icon and at that point, if there is anyone wishing to provide any public comment, we will elevate you. We ask you to please provide your name and address for the record and any question, comment, or concern you may have about the project can be raised at that point in time. The chair limits discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive and we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. After public comment, the board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to either deny or approve would be made and voted upon. A motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under basesture system law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to the agenda for the night, we have two continuations for new hearings and a number of items on our open meeting agenda. So first up we have is the comments. This public comment is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So we do ask you if you have anything to say regarding an application, just hold off on that until the appropriate time. But if anything is not on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand and we can elevate you in a moment. I will give a minute if anyone is out there. All right, I'm not seeing anything for public comment. We will move on to our agenda. All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to take an item out of order, which is Crooked Meadow LLC, application number 076-20, which is located under the public hearing section.
Good, so there's a motion to take that application out of order. Is there a second?
Second it.
By Scott, thank you, Scott. So the motion is made to take Good Meadow out of order made by Bob, seconded by Scott. We will do a roll call vote. James?
I, James Morse, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Application 76-20 Crooked Meadow LLC will be taken out of order. We have Mr. Maroni is here on behalf of the applicant. And Justin, if he could be elevated, please. Bob, do we have anything to read in for this?
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a formal request in the file, but we did meet with this previously. We had a vote on what we thought was substantial and insubstantial. The two items that we thought were substantial were conditions 19 and condition number 37 from the original decision. Decision, condition number 19 is regarding the curbing. The condition reads, "The applicant shall provide an ADA compliant sidewalk along the perimeter of the activity lawn, which is the shared play area. Sidewalk shall have a ramp and tactile strips where sidewalk intersects Crooked Meadow Road and at the midpoint of the perimeter crossing building three and four. And the remainder of the sidewalk shall have vertical non-mountable curbing installed to protect the sidewalk and play area." The administrator may want to comment on that, but I think what they requesting is that they'd like a Cape Cod berm instead. And then the second item, which was condition number 37, our condition reads, "The affordable unit homeowners will not be required to provide an advance payment of three months of condominium fees and shall only pay one month's fee at a time. The developer must fund the first three months of condominium fees for the affordable units. It may subsequently be reimbursed and this provision shall be carried into the condominium documents." And it's my understanding that they're asking that the affordable units do pay the advanced three-month payments.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And the regular members of the board are will be the voting members on this. Noreen, I don't know if you had anything or if we should turn it over to Mr. Maroni?
I think Bob did summarize pretty well. I think the issue with the vertical curbing was not something that the board specifically thought would be a good idea. Initially, that was from a recommendation from town engineering and they felt that having the vertical curbing protecting the sidewalk and then the activity area would be optimal given that it's likely that there will be children in the neighborhood as well.
Thank you, Noreen. James Morse got accidentally bounced out of Zoom. Justin, if he could be elevated again, please. And Mr. Maroni?
Chairman, members of the board, we don't have any problem with the board's decision on the curbing. I'd just like to make one statement on the other condition in that we feel it's easier for the buyers of affordable units to, at the time of closing, come up with whatever they need for closing costs, even if it concludes the three-month reserve than it does to try and reimburse us later for it as stated in the condition. However, whatever the board decides after hearing my comment, we'll respect and I have nothing further to say.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Maroni. We'll turn it over to board questions then. Scott?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Maroni. I know you just stated that you don't, it doesn't matter to you about the curb. And I was just curious, was it a price differential that asked between the Cape Cod berm and the vertical berm that you request the dissolution of the vertical?
It's a combination, Mr. Zalinski, of both, the cost of the curbing and the difference it makes when you're following. You know, the flowers hitting the vertical curbing versus going over there.
So if it was reduced, what would be your estimation of the price difference, article back to Cape Cod berm?
It's only a few thousand dollars.
Analysis to have that answer.
I'm sorry, it's only a few thousand dollars. I say it's not worth us. If the board wants it, we'll give it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
I just had one question, Mr. Maroni, on the condo fees. Is that a one-time payment with just the first homeowners or is that something that's going to take place over time each time something is transferred?
It's a one-time payment for them. When the unit's sold, the new buyer would have to pay the same thing.
So it will be a recurring payment as things are transferred over time?
Correct.
That's my only question.
Thank you, Bob. Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
I don't have any questions. I do favor the vertical curbing. I think it is for a couple of reasons. I don't want people parking on the sidewalk, you know, pulling off and parking on the sidewalk if there's additional parking needed and blocking the use of that as a sidewalk. And, you know, I just, I believe strongly in pedestrian, providing safe pedestrian ways.
All right, thank you, Ken. Ed, anything?
I disagree with Ken. We need to have that curbing. Other than that, I don't have any.
Thank you, Ed. James?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, and my issues were already addressed through testimony and questions. Turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click raised hand if you're among those in the attendees list. If we see anything, we will elevate you. Ask you to provide your name, an address for the record, along with any question, comment, or concern you may have.
All right, does it answer some of my questions? David just came in. I'm proud of him catching them off and whatever questions he have. And you can actually log on and ask you any questions too.
I'm not seeing anything. Back to the board, I suppose. Any sort of follow-up questions or would the board like to have discussion? Closing the hearing?
So I don't have any issue with the curbing, keeping it the way it is. I just think it's a safety factor. As far as the condominium fees, it's going to be a repeating charge each time the units are transferred. So every time an affordable unit's transferred, that new owner will have to do the same thing. They'll have to pay three months condo fees upfront. I do think it puts a burden on an affordable unit to pay three months of fees upfront versus paying, just allowing those to be paid monthly. I don't have as much of an issue with what we had in there about the developer actually putting that money in in advance because that the amounts of money is in there will eventually go into the account. But I do think the affordable unit should just have to pay a monthly fee versus doing the lump sum payment each time there's a transfer. It does affect sometimes qualifications just because that payment is upfront and people are based on monthly expenses and monthly income. So I'd rather see it remain the same that the affordable units would only be paid monthly, but I would strike the section that says that the developer has to fund the first three months of the condo fees.
Well, can I ask, what was the reason asking for three months?
So when they originally presented this to us, I asked that same question. I was told that it was only on the initial purchase. It wasn't a repeating amount. So I was looking at the original purchase. I thought maybe they had to start out with a specific amount to fund the reserve.
Extension court?
It's explained now that it isn't. It's going to be a transaction. It's going to go each time transferred. And that is something common that happens with condominiums. I just think when you're looking at monthly condo fees, asking for three months payment in advance for an affordable unit where the incomes are limited puts much more burden on something than.
I agree with you on that.
Mr. Maroni, you can understand the concern of the board regarding these affordable units and, you know, how much money that the the potential homeowners may have. The application as you propose, is that standard when it comes to affordable 40Bs and how they're structured with condos?
The purpose of it, collecting the three months upfront is sort of to establish, it's called a reserve, an operating reserve. So that if someone falls behind in their fees, the association still has enough money to pay their bills by drawing on that person's three-month fee till they can take the appropriate steps to get the payment for it.
Understood, but in your experience with these affordable homeowners, do they have any issues putting up the money at closing for the three-month reserve?
I find it's easier for them to get the money at closing, just like down payment or whatever they need. They can, they can come up with the money to close. It's much more difficult for them to try to catch up on payments later.
Would that mean that they would be financing that? Is that what you, is that what you're asserting? That they would get the money with the closing, with their loan?
Perhaps, or they might get it as part of a gift from a family for down payment or however they, however they manage to come up with the money. It's a fairly minimal down payment. It's usually preferable financing because they're first-time buyers. So they get a little bit of an advantage on the rate. You know, makes them on the same footing with an affordable buyer. As, you know, we're all putting up the same reserve fee.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'm personally of the opinion that there is enough concessions made to help these affordable get into their house and make it a stress-free experience for them and get them started on the right foot. That it's a small thing to ask to, to not ask for three months and break their back immediately. I think it's a small ask to not, to not get the three.
Mr. Maroni, what is the projected condo fee monthly?
One, I think it was 19250. I believe that from memory, that's what I put in.
And when you're basing the 19250 on the condo fee, how does that work out on your projected annual budgets? Is that, are they covering just their expenses for the complex or are they actually having money left to put into a reserve?
Separate reserve. So when we talk, it's not going to be under the CBA reserve. And there's a replacement reserve for the septic system and there's a replacement reserve for fixed elements such as roadways. Anything the association's responsible for, common landscaping, fencing, common area, any of that.
So on your projected annual operating budget, on the monies that would be coming in from the condo fees, what remainder of that are you projecting per year would be available to go into a reserve funds or are you basically covering most of the expenses?
There's, like I said, there's three reserve funds and there's, I don't have the budget in front of me, but there's quite a bit in each budget because what we do is we project out the estimated useful life of the fixed elements, for instance, fencing, landscaping, paving. And we, if it's 20 years, we take how much money we need to reserve to pay for that in 20 years and that's in the.
Basically just covering expenses?
They funded the reserve from year one on, from month one on.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Maroni?
So one quick question. So when an affordable homeowner sells their unit, do they, are they then refunded that three months that they funded in advance?
Seen it done both ways myself. I've pretty much done it that way. But I've seen it done where they don't get it, but if they, if they make all their payments on time and they sell the unit 10 years from now, they get their three-month reserve back if we haven't had to dip into it and the new person replaces their reserve.
So have you, so have you submitted condominium documents?
No, we're working on them right now. I need an answer to this to know how to finalize them.
So if you haven't submitted the condominium documents, are you planning on reimbursing the prior owner on a new purchase or not? I'm sorry, I lost your audio.
I'm sorry. You have me now?
We lost you again, Mr. Maroni.
What about now?
We have you.
Okay, the answer to the question is if they pay their condo fees on time, we have no expenses in collecting ongoing condo fees from them, they get refunded to them on sale and the new person replaces their reserve. If there are any expenses related to the reserve, to collecting money from them over the period of time that they own the unit, we take it out of their reserve and refund what's left.
So that's what you'd be basing on a 6D certificate. So when you're doing the 6D certificate on close, it's going to show if all the expenses have been paid over time. If they're short on expenses, that current unit owner would have to come up with the additional amount that is due. Even if they prepaid, if you're writing condo fees, the prepayments are usually either that they are being reimbursed and aren't being reimbursed. So it's kind of a simple question and I understand that, I assumed you would have already had your basic condo documents done already. But are you writing it up that the condo docs that I've always seen regarding prepayments of condo fees, there is always a reimbursement of closing because the new owner has to pay the new three months. I've never seen that used against a 6D certificate. The 6D certificate, they may have to come up with extra money. So I'm a little confused with the fact that you're not sure how you're going to be formatting the condo docs. It could be this way or it may not be this way. I am a little surprised you don't have any basic condo docs because I, was my impression that these had already been submitted for review along with homeowners' docs. So that's what I thought. I thought they had already been submitted and looked over by town council.
In response to that, they have not been, you lost me again. Okay, you got me now. They have not been submitted. They are drafted. They do say in our draft, three-month reserve, which we can't finalize until this board agrees we can collect the three-month reserve. Therefore, we can't talk about the reimbursement of the three-month reserve until we know if we even collected a three-month reserve. State law only allows us to go back and collect six months of delinquent condo fees. Therefore, we don't, we react quickly when they fall behind in their condo fees. We take it out of the reserve to fund the collection of reserves if they fall more than a month or two behind and have them made a payment arrangement with us. So the condo docs are drafted. We're working on final approval right now. I couldn't go all the way with the final approval until I get the last meeting. We did 17 insubstantial changes that I needed to put in some of my regulatory agreements, some of the other agreements. And now to finish the condo docs, I just need an answer on this. Whatever it is, I'll live with. It's just, I need an answer.
Yep, Bob, it looks like you're muted if you're trying to speak.
So, so right now we were just discussing the affordable units. Let's put that aside. You would have the condo docs the way you want to format for the market rate units because that wouldn't adjust anything. So on the part that you've written for the market rate units, does it say that there's a three-month reserve on purchase and that that three-month reserve gets rebated at the next sale to the previous owner? I'm not getting the audio again.
I don't know why it keeps cutting out, but anyway, yeah, they, we do, it's the same, it's the exact same thing for the, for the market rate units. We collect the three-month reserve and if they've paid their fees without a problem, we refund them on sale. If they haven't, we take out what it costs us to collect them and what they're delinquent. And as you're right, it's covered under the 6D so long as there's enough in there to cover it. If we need it for operating, we take the money. Remember, we're out of it as soon as the last unit's sold. We turn the trust, the association over to the homeowners and we just have to turn it over in such a format that they can manage it and have enough money to pay to replace things down the road. That's where the real value is at condominiums is in the reserves and.
That's why my, and that's why my question was, what was your projected annual operating budget? Because if at 192 condo fees for what you're projecting in your first year, that could either cover your basic expenses for the unit or sometimes it puts a small amount in a reserve account. You usually know that upfront because you've already come up with the actual amount of the condo fee. So you must know if there's a certain percentage going into these different operating budgets or not. What I'm confused at is that you have, you have market rate units that have nothing to do with our decision tonight. And no matter what the decision is tonight, those condo docs would be written for the market rate units just the way you want them. And this is, I haven't heard before where there would be a three-month advance payment and then on the new sale, that money would not be reimbursed because it was part of an advance payment if there were other expenses that you wanted to be deducted. I just haven't seen that in any of the condo docs that I've reviewed. So, so that was my main question. That's, that's what I needed to know.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess the fundamental issue is whether it, you know, is there any particular reason why the condo docs have to be the same for everyone? Or could the affordables have, have this break, right? And who you asked?
Seems like the board would like to give the affordables a break.
Right.
Mary?
Yeah, I can, I don't have a question, but I can make a statement that my experience with affordable homeowners, much less first time affordable homeowners, is that to ask them to put up that amount of money in addition to all their other expenses and to expect that it come from a gift letter from family is really not a, a fair way to approach this. They, they have to, a really hard time generally making the initial payments they have to for everything going on, including electric, et cetera. I, I think it's an onerous thing to ask.
I agree, Mary. Um, I, I think it's tough enough for applicants to, um, come under these restrictions for these affordable units. And, uh, I think for asking that amount of money upfront, uh, it, it might be too high of a burden for them.
Mr. Chairman, I think through testimony, Mr. Marioni stated he'd go with whatever way we decided. He just needed to know that so he could move on with instructing his documents.
Oh, absolutely, Scott, absolutely.
With that being said, I make a motion to close.
Second.
All right. Motion to close made by Scott, seconded by Ken. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote once again. Uh, Scott, you're first.
Uh, Scott Zlinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kier, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the hearing is closed. What would be the board's pleasure?
Uh, so as far as the request regarding the changing the curbing, I, I think that for safety's sake, we should leave that the same. As far as the condo fees, um, I think the affordable unit should stay with the projection that they only be allowed to pay one month's fee at a time. Um, I do not have an issue if we remove, the development must fund the first three months because it's a brand new complex. And there shouldn't be anything that they, those three months are going to cause any issues with. Um, and then once that first three months is done, you've already funded whatever the account is. So if somebody wanted to remove that second sentence about the developer, um, pre-funding the account, I wouldn't have an issue with that.
I'll second Mr. Dugan's, uh, motion on both counts.
Very good. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Scott. So, uh, the motion is made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote again. Scott?
Scott Zlinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ben Kier, aye.
No worries. We, we got everyone.
Wasn't sure who you were.
Uh, we got you both, so that's fine. And TJ Hari, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Maroni, thank you. All right. Up next, we took that out of order. So up next, we have uh, application, the continuances, application 36-20 Wins Ponds LLC. And regarding, uh, this application, once again, we have, uh, Mr. Maroni as the applicant. Uh, before we actually begin, uh, it's my understanding, uh, that Mr. Maroni will ultimately be asking for a continuation to March 25th. Uh, this is because that, now, I'll allow him to explain in his own words, but, uh, the short version is that they're, uh, considering, uh, major revisions to the plans. Uh, so if that is the case, um, my plan for tonight would, to be here, heard briefly from Mr. Maroni. Uh, my understanding is that there is a Falmouth Conservation uh, agent willing to provide testimony as well, who's, uh, providing some guidance regarding these changes. Uh, and if that is the understanding, Mr. Maroni, uh, we can proceed.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question prior to Mr. Marioni starting?
Sure. And I was, I was just going to add something else, Scott, but go, go right ahead.
By, by all means, go ahead.
Thank you, Scott. Um, so, Mr. Maroni, if you are in agreement, uh, we would be expecting you to execute, uh, basically a continuance. Uh, and I'm sure that Noreen has some sort of language proposed. Uh, but as you're aware, 40B allows, uh, the comprehensive permit granting authority, the ZBA, uh, up to 180 days to deliberate, to deliberate. Um, we would basically be asking you to add two months, uh, tolling onto the end of that. Uh, since we will, we will ultimately be continuing to march, uh, just the way things are with the board meeting virtually and the substantial changes that you are proposing, uh, the board would need enough time to review that. Since that, uh, tonight, there's only going to be some minor testimony, nothing really of substance that will be discussed tonight. Uh, so would, would you be in agreement with that, Mr. Maroni?
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
God.
All right. But you still have an audio problems, but.
So that, that's a, yeah, that's a yes. I would be, you know, I don't know why this keeps kicking out like this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maroni. So, um, I guess Noreen will prepare the paperwork for you to sign. Uh, but if, if you'd like to give us a brief summary of, uh, what you're now proposing for the project. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. Go, go right ahead, Scott.
Just a point of, um, clarification. So, so what we're entering into right now, is this, is this an open meeting? Section, I mean, with all the bells and whistles? We're having some, some testimony. Is there public part, uh, participation? Or how, what, how is this being characterized? This little section we're doing right now?
Uh, this is absolutely an, an open meeting that we're having.
Good.
As, as far as how much we're going to dive in tonight, I mean, I, the, the expectation was to have more of a presentation, but since Mr. Maroni is across some major revisions to the project.
I just wanted to know what the parameters were of what we were doing, that's all.
Right, right. Understood. Uh, it, it was my understanding that he would provide, it says my internet is unstable. It was my understanding that he'd provide a brief update. We would allow the conservation agent, uh, to provide a brief summary of what's going on and, and then ultimately continue to that date in March since there's really nothing of substance to discuss tonight.
Thank you for the clarification.
No worries. Uh, Mr. Maroni?
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, what, what we've been looking at after we received the comments back from, uh, BSC on the peer review and their consultant regarding, uh, the wetlands. We, we think that this may be better for both sides, you and us. If we, what we're looking at is moving the road, trying to swap it with the septic system as Mr. Forman has suggested a couple of times. In order to do that, the septic, the leaching field will be too big for that area. So we're also considering if there's a potential compromise in here to drop back to eight units if they could all be three bedroom units to help mitigate the loss of, uh, revenue from the sale, having to sell two bedroom units basically at a loss. I think it, it solves most of the problems. It gets two buildings completely out of the buffer zone. And it leaves one building slightly in the buffer zone. But I think, uh, from our consultants, conversations with the board's consultants, that buffer zone isn't as important to buildings. We can mitigate that as it was to the leaching field being so close to it. So I guess, uh, the one key to us to, if we, if we can do that, get eight units, is will we be able to get the waiver that we would need from the Falmouth Wetlands Regulations and Bylaw? And that's a question I know the board can't answer. Well, you, you could grant the waiver, but Conservation Commission, I suppose, would, would have, uh, an awful lot to say about whether or not, how you felt about granting the waiver. So I guess, uh, why we needed the time was we're revising the plan and working on those changes. It, they allow us to address pretty much everything the board has brought up, including the turnaround, the impact on the buffer zone, the septic system so close to the vernal pool, the road away from that telephone pole and, uh, all the other things we've been making note of that have come up. And we think this might be the best way to go if the board, doesn't have a problem with that. Of course, the, the key is the waiver from the Falmouth Wetlands Regulation and Bylaw.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Uh, Noreen, do we have someone from CONCOM? I just, I'm not sure who it is, so I'm not sure who to evaluate.
Yes, so that would be Mark Kispursik and Jennifer Lincoln.
Great. Justin, if you could please? Mark and Jennifer, welcome.
Hello. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Uh, not, not sure if either one of you wants to take the lead, but go ahead and feel free.
I think I'll defer to Mark because Mark has actually been to the site multiple times. So, Mark, what's, where did Mark go?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, right there. Sorry.
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Maroni. Good to see you again. No, I mean, I guess, uh, we had looked at the document from BSC, you know, that, uh, memo that Matt Byrne did. Um, dated, you know, 12-220. And, you know, obviously we agree with, you know, just about everything that was in that report. You know, the, you know, the bottom line is the vernal pool and, you know, the wetland resource area can't really be protected by the current project design. I think Mr. Maroni was alluding to, you know, the, the changes that would probably help the project out a lot. Now, it's, you know, the, based on the plan that was seen, that units 1A and 1B and 2A and 2B just, I mean, there's not enough room in that location and, you know, to protect the buffer to the vernal pool. Units 3A and 3B, it would be great if that could at least be pulled back to get out of some of that buffer away from the slope so that, you know, you have a limit of work that's more on the top of the bank at least. Um, and, uh, I guess, you know, when, uh, Noreen was mentioning about Ken Forman mentioning on the septic, um, I don't know what, you know, comments were made, but, uh, you know, we, we thought that, uh, when the units, if those two units were pulled out, then there would be more room to make the septic, uh, uh, leach field more lengthened. You know, have it tighter up against the property line for a greater distance from, you know, the vernal pool. And, um, and then the question is where would the roadway go? I guess the roadway could either go against the property line and then the lengthened leach field or, you know, have the leach field, you know, even further away and then have the, uh, roadway come, you know, along the side of the, uh, the north side of the leach field, you know, sort of in that already disturbed area and go into, you know, the roadway that leads into the, uh, the property. I don't know if it, if there were any other comments, uh, but that's, that's what would, I, I think would work really well if, you know, that's a possibility.
All right. Thank you, Mark and Jennifer. We'll check to see if, uh, board does have any questions on this. And if I didn't already mention it before, the voting numbers on this are myself, Ken, uh, Bob, Ed, and Scott. Uh, Bob, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mark, so, uh, Mr. Maroni kind of alluded tonight that they're looking at maybe moving that building one and two, but then there would still be that third section that would be close into the buffer. Uh, so, you know, from your discussion, I would assume the best thing is to just keep everything out of the buffer. Um, because it, it's just too much of a chance that anything in that buffer is going to cause some kind of damage.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. You know, I, I mean, quite frankly, in the notes I had put about, you know, you know, it's 3A and 3B should be removed or at the very least pulled out of the buffer zone, away from the vernal pool as much as possible. I don't know if that's possible based on the amount of room you have for certain. But, you know, again, if it could be taken out of the buffer, then that would be great.
But just through you, Mr. Chair, so I know we've discussed this over time, but if that's something the board is interested in, that we keep everything out of the buffer, I think that's something that we have to make clear now to the applicant that that's exactly what we're looking for. Um, versus fooling around with something being in the buffer or not.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, we'll, we'll go through, uh, board questions and then we'll try to poll the board, uh, to the point that you brought up, Bob. And, uh, we'll wrap it up shortly. Mary, do you have anything?
I, I do only was, the only thing I have is I was wondering if Jennifer had anything to add. And, um, and then I really don't have, I don't believe any further questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. So Jennifer, do you have anything additional to, to add?
Um, only that, you know, I'm in agreement with the BSC group's, um, report and Mark's assessment. Anytime you can pull those structures and that excavation of those structures out of the buffer is a good thing. It will help, um, protect the water quality in the pool. It'll help protect the wildlife habitat in that area. And it'll also help protect, um, the, um, wildlife that uses the pool and where they overwinter because they do come out of that pool in the winter time. They do go up into those upland areas and that is where they overwinter. So any way we can pull those, um, structures and those units out of that buffer zone would give the, those, um, that wildlife a better chance of survival.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ken, anything?
Well, first I, I commend Mr. Marioni for the reduction in units. I think that's really what makes this a doable project. Um, I did, if, if we convert all of the units to, uh, three bedrooms, how, how many two bedroom units are we losing?
Yep.
Two. Okay, thanks.
He's indicating two for the record.
So, and, and secondly, are the, and you can just nod your head, yes or no. Are the buildings, is it basically, uh, the three bedroom layout that you had for the three bedroom units would just be applied to all the units? We're not enlarging the units at all? Okay.
All right. So staying within the footprint?
Staying within the existing footprint. Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I think, I think that certainly leads to a better project. That's all I have to say.
Great. Ed?
Yeah, I think you're going in the right direction now.
James?
No, thank you.
All right. Uh, Scott, there you are.
Mr. Maroni, do, uh, do you, uh, do you suspect that you'll run into any time challenges on the redesign and all of that? We've had a little issue with getting all the stuff we needed when we needed it. With these changes, what do you think your timeframe is going to be to get us everything back complete?
I worked this out at the end.
It's impossible with not being able to hear the applicant.
I was just up, there you are. You got me now?
We do?
Yeah. So, so what, what, we feel our engineer can have everything done by the middle of February to the third week in February. We can get it to BSC and I think that gives them enough time to review it and get comments back to the board prior to the, uh, which I believe will be extended. Noreen, was it the 18th or the 25th?
Fifth.
We're looking at?
Twenty fifth.
Then we're looking at the 25th. Yeah.
And that means, that means all the financial adjustments, everything will come back to us at one time?
Yes. Yes. Complete revised application, drawings, waiver requests, everything will be completed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, anything else from the board? All right. Uh, I, I'll just, first public comment, just to, any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Any members of the public in the attendees list? Go ahead and hit the raised hand and we can get to you shortly.
Uh, while you're waiting for the public, I did have one more question for conservation and I wasn't sure if they had a chance to look at. wasn't sure if they had a chance to look at the amount of proposed fill for the property and and whether there was anything that needed to be managed for that.
I did not look at that aspect, Noreen. Mark, did you have a chance to to look at that?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm.
I thought there was a number of 35,000 being imported at once, not mistaken, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Scott. There, yeah, there's a there's a substantial amount of fill being proposed to be brought on into onsite. So didn't know if that went into your calculations, Jennifer or Mark.
We can, we can take a look at that and and provide the board some comments prior to the.
For the next one?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because that's 50, that's 50, every 1,000 yards of material is 50 10-wheeler truckloads.
Yep.
So we're talking about 35,000 yards divided by 20 or 25. That's a lot of loads and a lot of.
That is a lot.
That could change if they reduce the number of, you know.
It'll actually be more. They still got to bring the grade up, no matter how big the buildings are, or they'll have elevation changes. They have to bring it up all around in order to make to make the drive-in match the mean grade of the building. So the fill is actually more because there's less structure.
We, again, we can take a look at that and offer the board some comments.
Thanks. Mark, I think you were indicating?
Yeah, I just had a quick question because, yeah, part of the point is depending on, you know, if some of those units go away, and especially on number three, because I can remember on the plan that there was a lot of grading going down towards Vernal Pool. In that area where the third unit is, it's the slope sort of goes up and then it goes down. And I thought that, all right, if that slope wasn't going away, then you could probably add a lot of fill in there without having much of an impact where, you know, it would go down towards the Vernal Pool.
Except except for the fact that you'd be doing all, you'd be running all your drainage through fill. You follow me? That's what it was. But if you have compacted fill for your for your excavation and your backfills and everything, it kind of eliminates the success rate of of regular percolation. I don't, I would suspect.
But wouldn't they have proper drains there, too?
Well, that's what's going to happen. The grade's so low, Mark, now, by the time they have to go down to the perk point past the lowest level of the fill, it's almost even with that Vernal Pool. So if it migrates at that level, it's going that way on everything.
All right, I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Anything else from the board? Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that we're looking for any structures to be outs- outside of that buffer zone?
Correct.
That'll be our expectation on March 25th.
And also on March 25th, we are expecting all that information, but also make sure that anybody in your design team, Mr. Maroni, also is in attendance on the 25th, so we don't have confusion if we have to ask questions of any of the professionals.
Mr. Maroni, we lost your audio again.
No, I'm trying to, sorry. So I guess maybe I've been misunderstood here tonight. I guess the the we don't think we can get all three buildings completely out of the buffer zone. We've been playing with this thing now for three or four weeks, and we felt that we could move the road over and deal with the septic issue. We can get two of the buildings out of the buffer zone. We also feel like I may have overestimated the amount of fill coming in. It may be closer to 25,000 yards instead of 35,000, which isn't that big a difference, but still a lot of fill coming in. But the 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 fact is, we we don't think we can get the third building completely out of the buffer zone, but we think we can mitigate it. And BSC made comments of how it could be mitigated and felt that that mitigation would work. And we thought that by reducing the impact tremendously and getting a waiver, the third building could be slightly in the buffer zone, that that compromise would, we're looking to see if that might be acceptable to the board.
Jennifer, that sort of mitigation that Mr. Maroni is proposing, is that permissible under the Falmouth Conservation Guidelines?
Let that real quick.
I know it's tough since we're talking.
May I ask Mr. Maroni a question?
Sure. Go go right ahead, Jennifer.
Mr. Maroni, how far would you be able to pull that back? Would you be keeping it in its same location, or would you be pulling it back even further when you remove buildings 1 and 2?
It would be more like rotating it so that maybe more of the building along the back of it might be in the buffer zone, but less depth of the building would be in the buffer zone. So we're not quite sure yet how many square feet we're going to save. We're just trying to get as as little impact in the buffer zone as we can, but we don't think we can get out of it. At least that's the way it looks so far in all the preliminary drawings we've been doing.
So there's no way?
I'm sorry.
There's no way to even kind of shift it kind of landward to kind of pull that out, because that is kind of a big site, so.
Yeah, we're looking at all of that, Jennifer, but it's just when we do that, and and this thing would be really easy if we could get everything out. So I'm not looking to leave some in for the sake of leaving it in, but it it's affected by that turnaround that we need, the width of the road, the slope to the right side. We're doing everything we can right now to minimize this. I don't know how it's going to end up, what's going to be left in there. But, you know, I guess the question is, are we fighting for 12 units or are we fighting for eight units? It's, so that's, that's what we're trying to determine, is there some cooperation here or not?
Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask Jennifer a question?
I'll allow Jennifer to, whatever you had to say, Jennifer, go right ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I'd like to kind of, I think before I commit to saying the mitigation would be appropriate, we'd like to see how Mr. Maroni's project team can rotate and kind of shift that building. So we know exactly what we're talking about before we say, yes, mitigating measures are fine, things like that.
I I understand. It is tough since we're talking conceptually right now instead of anything on a, you know, a physical piece of paper. But generally speaking, Jennifer, does the the conservation, do they, is it permissible to allow that sort of thing? Generally speaking, I mean, will it?
Generally speaking, yes. I mean, we prefer to see them pulled out of the buffer zone. We prefer to see that that distance as much as possible, the impacts lessened as much as possible. You know, it's it's great to hear that the the project would be reducing those very problematic first two units. But if there is a way, again, to pull that unit out, that would be, that would be ideal.
Thank you.
But so but when you pull that unit out, too, there's going to have to be, what, at least a 10 foot limit of work beyond the building footprint?
No audio.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit more, Mark, because of the patio and the deck.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So so we'll minimize it the best we can, and we'll, and I'll get, you know, I'll get a preliminary plan. Mark Manganelle will get one over to you for your review when we think we're at the point where we can do the best we can and see what you have to say about that.
Okay. Scott, I'm sorry, Scott.
Ms. Lincoln, I was just curious. Have you ever seen any issues of 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 this size or magnitude? Be subject of a denial. Is it enough to deny a project like this without more cooperation with the applicant to get out of that zone completely? I mean, has that been done?
That's a dangerous question.
Well, no, I'm just, have you ever seen it? I'm not saying this one.
Yes, I have.
You understand the environment.
I do. And I I have seen that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
But I want to clarify that I've seen that from a conservation standpoint, Mr. Zelinski, not not a CBA standpoint, so.
No, 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 I understand. I'm talking about environmental impact and
Yes.
subject matter expert. So I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question?
Go right ahead.
Make one comment. If Mr. Maroni could just, you know, provide Mark and I a a plan of just that area, we wouldn't need to see, you know, the upland part of the project, then we can offer the comments a lot more quickly. If if we could just see that small section of the plan, like the the septic system and that first, that first unit where that pool is, if that's possible, might save a little time. Just throwing that out there.
Sure. Mr. Maroni, could you could you do that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll do that. We'll work very closely with you. I think Mark Manganelle has been working with you thus far, and we'll continue to do that. Your input naturally has a lot to do with where we're going now, as does Mr. Dugan and Mr. Formans previously about the, and Mr. Zelinski's about the fill. Well, we're taking everything the board says seriously. I I hope you can see that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Maroni.
All right. Anything else from the board?
I guess just to your chairman.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ken.
Um, just on that, if I could get a little clarification from Mr. Marioni about the turnaround, he mentioned that they would be providing adequate turnaround at the end of the road. Is that, are you envisioning sort of a cul-de-sac structure, or how, what are you thinking there?
No audio.
You got your audio again, Mr. Maroni.
So the answer to the question, Mr. Forman, is we don't think we can get a cul-de-sac in there. In fact, we know we can't get a cul-de-sac in there with this. We're just going to stay with the hammerhead that that's there at the end, but it will allow us to make it more comfortable than some people feel it is presently. So it just, it just gives us a little bit more elbow room on that turnaround and snow storage. It does a lot of other things that we need to accomplish out there, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else from the board?
No, I guess this is just repeating it, but but again, you know, I think from review of the project, we all know it would be best if everything is kept outside of that buffer. And I understand you're removing two buildings and you're not sure of the third, if it can go out or if it can be shifted or not. If it is a situation that you don't think that third building can be out of that buffer zone, we do want to see documentation why. A lot of times we hear these changes on projects and we hear we've looked at it, but it can't be done. We don't know what kind of process you use or what different plans you're looking at. In order for us to understand that, we actually have to see the documentation. So if there's a situation where that can't be moved out, we need to show something proving why it can't be moved out.
All right. So with that, I think we're looking for the continuation. And before we do that, Mark and Jennifer, thank you for your time tonight. And.
Thank you.
Here. All right. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to continue this to March 25th.
All right. And Mr. Mr. Maroni, you can get that signed continuance to us as soon as possible. Norine can send it right over to you.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. All right. So the motion to continue was made by Bob, seconded by Ken, to March 25th. The voting members are myself, Ken, Bob, Ed, and Scott. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Everyone, thank you for your time tonight, and we will see everyone March 25th.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, up next, we have our second continuation of the night. It's application 55-20, RLB LLC, Rebecca Anne Lane in East Falmouth. Again, we have Mr. Maroni with us for the applicant. And similar set of circumstances like the last application, but I'll at least have to get it on the record for for this application. Once again, it's our understanding that the applicant is unable to present substantively to the board tonight. They're proposing, they need to make changes as proposed by our peer engineer review team. So since the applicant cannot proceed in a substantive form tonight, we are looking for the applicant to sign a similar agreement as to the last application, basically extending the 180-day review period. That's allowed under 40B, granting a two-month continuance, really, in order for the board to review the necessary changes that are being proposed to the project. And I believe the voting members on this are myself, Ken, Bob, Scott, and Mary. So Mr. Maroni, is my summarization, is that accurate?
Yes. Yes, it's accurate. Little different reasons on this one. When we get the the peer reviewers' comments back, our engineers' schedule didn't provide for him to be able to make the changes in time. So we're going to need the continuance, which we're willing to agree to in writing. However, there was a few things in the comments that I would like to discuss with the board that affect the changes we may be making to the plan. One of the first, the first one is that they wanted all the trees existing and that will be left marked on the plans. We'd like to, I don't know if it requires a waiver or just a discussion to not mark the existing trees, because obviously all the ones in the middle of the site are coming down. We're just going to leave the ones we can on the perimeter. The second item we wanted to discuss is just to confirm that we are working on the zoning opinion that the laws emerged that Mr. Dugan requested at the last meeting. And the last thing we want to discuss is this comment that continues to come up about changing the access points from one access point in the parking as we show it to multiple access points, driveways for individual buildings. We've looked at that. Mr. Bosellio would be able to speak on it on the next meeting. It does, it just doesn't work for us. It's 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 more paving. It's it's more uncomfortable parking. It's more headlights pointing into the houses across the street, and we think it's just a lousy look. You have three driveways next to each other. We couldn't possibly get five driveways in there because we don't control one of the parcels of land that would allow it. Yet the comment keeps coming up. We keep looking at ways to deal with it, and we just want to see how the board. You know, we don't want to go out and draw all these drawings and have you guys demand it. It's something we can't do, even if you demand it. So I'd like to discuss it, is what I'm saying.
Chairman, isn't that part of the deal? If you want to change the project, you've got to, you've got to put the work in and then present it. I mean, I'm a little confused on how we're in the midst of almost continuing this, but we're not, but we're taking testimony. And then he he wants some, he wants us to put us in a direction where he can redraw the plans and then come back to us.
No, no, no. I want, I don't want to redraw the plans, Mr. Zelinski. I want to leave them the way they are. I just don't want the board to deny us on the basis where I haven't discussed it.
The thing is, right now, just for a point of order, you've asked for a continuance tonight because you don't have any of the information available. Once the continuation is is asked for, and we grant it, we don't discuss the project. We continue to the next meeting to discuss the project. You know, you haven't submitted the information right now because you understand that you're working on it. We understand that. But we can't commit to something that we haven't seen and that we aren't seeing coming in. So just as a point of order, I don't think we can discuss this tonight. I think we can discuss the continuation. I don't think we can discuss the project.
So, Mr. Maroni, your your audio went out again. But I I know this this differs from the project. I don't want to get in too much testimony here, but it differs from your last project, you know, with conservation, offering some guidance on on where that project is going. But I, it was my understanding that tonight you'd be requesting just a continuation. So I was thinking that is, that's what's before the board tonight on this project.
To discuss, and I know my, I had asked to discuss these couple of things. To discuss, and I know my, I had asked to discuss these couple of things. If it, it's what's before you now. I'm not looking to change it. It's, it's what's before you now is one access point in the parking the way it's laid out. And what we're, what we're asking is how the, you know what? I, I can't change it anyway, so we're just going to have to go with what we have. I just wanted to discuss it and give the reasons here instead of, uh, later on and give you an update on where we stood and why we weren't ready for tonight. So.
Understood. I, I think it's just cleaner if we have the, this, just a request for the continuance. Uh, so again, on this project, the voting members are myself, Ken, Bob, Scott, and Mary. Would anyone like to make?
Well, so to, to the administrator, what is the date we have for the continuance?
Uh, March 25th.
So then I would make a motion to continue this to March 25th?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, so motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Uh, Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So, uh, this application is continued to March 25th. Mr. Maroni, thank you for your time tonight.
Mr. Chairman, could, could we take a brief recess?
Sure. Uh, we will take a five-minute break and be right back.
Thank you.
All right, so we're back, back on to our public hearings. We took application seventy-six dash twenty Crooked Meadow LLC out of order. So up next, we would have application sixty-five dash twenty Ralph trustee three eighteen Sherwood Drive in East Falmouth.
So application number sixty-five dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Sally J. Ralph trustee of Naples, Florida, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a second floor addition to the single-family dwelling on subject property known as three eighteen Sherwood Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From Scott McGann from Health regarding three eighteen Sherwood. One bedroom being proposed in the new second floor is not an increase in flow or bedroom count as the second bedroom on the first floor is proposed to be opened up to the rest of the house via case opening. Health has no issues with this project. That was his revised referral as of January fifth. Engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Sherwood Drive and Sandpiper Circle are private ways in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. From conservation, there was a note in here that they requested a determination of applicability with conservation because it's within the flood zone. I think that is in the file. Fire Department, they have no issue with the project is drawn. Assessors Department, no comment. Planning, no comment. From the Water Department, the existing water service is three-quarter inch and should be upgraded to one-inch service line. Because the property is within the flood zone, Mr. Clower did submit the FEMA worksheet. The independent appraisal. Showing that the work on the property is within the fifty percent. As required. He also submitted a bulk calculation chart of the area.
All right, thank you, Bob.
And also, no, also, Mr. Chairman, he also submitted a letter from a structural engineer showing that the property, the foundation could carry the second floor. And I would like, like to thank Mr. Clower for submitting all that information regarding flood zones in advance.
All right, thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this application will be the regular members and Attorney Clower.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amit Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant Sally J. Ralph, trustee of the Ralph Family Revocable Trust. She's the owner of the property at three eighteen Sherwood Drive in East Falmouth, and is the applicant in this matter. Ms. Ralph and her son David are in the audience this evening, as well as the builder Warren Reed with All About the House Inc. If need be, if there's a question that I can't address, I might ask them to be elevated, but I don't think we need to just yet. The applicant is seeking permission to add a second floor or a second floor to a portion of the existing dwelling. This property, three eighteen Sherwood Drive, is located in Great Harbors nearby the Great Pond. It's on a lot of ten thousand four hundred square feet, and it's in the residential B zoning district. Presently, this is a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of just about twenty-seven hundred square feet. It's non-conforming to the front yard setback to Sandpiper Circle at twenty-three and a half feet where twenty-five is required. It's non-conform to the southerly side yard setback being eight feet where ten feet is required. And it's non-conform to lot coverage by structures, whereas it is twenty-seven percent where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent is allowed by special permit. The applicants have owned this property for about twenty years and are seeking to improve the usefulness and aesthetics in the design. They're seeking to add a second floor over a portion of the home. This will also entail enclosing a small existing overhang. Elimination of some of the existing porch areas and the addition of a new porch entryway towards Sherwood Drive. The results of this cumulatibility will not have any significant impact on footprint. It actually represents a decrease. There's no change to the non-conforming setbacks, and the lot coverage by structure is decreased from twenty-seven percent to twenty-six and a half percent. The number of bedrooms will remain the same. This property is located within the AE twelve flood zone. We did submit the appraisal of a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet. Any opinion from a structural engineer, as Mr. McGann noted, and those showed that both the work is done within the allowable limits and that the foundation is more than sufficient to support the weight of the second floor. This project does require a special permit under section two forty-three C as well as section two forty-sixty-nine E. Two forty-three C holds that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Because on state, the boards should consider the standards of two forty-two sixteen, and also whether the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, there's no new non-conformity created. Non-conforming setbacks are affected. But the non-conforming lot coverage by structure will decrease by half a percent to twenty-six and a half percent. In the residential B zoning district, lot coverage which exceeds twenty percent does require a special permit under sixty-nine E. And in that instance, the board's asked to consider the size and height of the structures in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. The effects of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, there's no impact to views and vistas from public ways as it's private ways that surround the property. Shadow should not be affected. It's well-screened and well-positioned relative to the other properties. And there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyment as the number of bedrooms remain the same. As to the size and height of the structures, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet, which looks at the thirty-two nearby properties within a three-hundred-foot radius. Of those, this does have one of the larger footprints as it exists. But twenty-one of those properties, twenty-one of those thirty-two properties do have a larger gross floor area, which is to say that, as proposed, this property by no means constitutes an outlier for the neighborhood. This is a proposal that the applicant has sought to do for quite a long time, the dream doing this for quite a while. It's a better and a more useful design for them. It will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, and it decreases the non-conforming lot coverage. This meets the standards of two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. And there's really no adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial, the outlined benefits that we've gone over. For these reasons and for these considerations, I'd ask that the board grant a special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Now we'll turn it over to board questions. Ed, anything?
No, it looks like it'll be an improvement to the area. I'd go for it.
All right, thanks, Ed. Ken?
And no questions. Thank you for providing additional information.
Welcome. Thank you.
Bob?
Just clarification. So this is a three-bedroom?
No, it's, as exists, it's two, and as proposed, it's two. The original plans did show a third bedroom, but that was removed to reflect an office on the first floor.
Okay, so we're keeping it as a two?
Yes.
Right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bob. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Good evening, Mr. Clower.
Good evening, sir.
On the permit, you, the permit request is for a second-story addition, correct? All right, if you, if I can refer you to, on the plans, to A three, section B. If you look just above the section B on the side cut of that house, it shows a new piece of four-foot foundation and an extension to that floor that leads out to the covered porch area. Would that constitute any kind of work on the first floor?
I mean, there is work that's occurring on the first floor, as I, as I mentioned during the, during my presentation. There's a few things that are happening there. Specifically, they're enclosing a small existing overhang, adding a front porch, an entry area, and eliminating some of the existing porch area.
So, so what would be the added square footage of enclosed area on that side of the building? It doesn't have a mark out on the extension to the first floor and able to make it, 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 it looks like they're extending the first floor to be able to support the second floor.
So there is, there, there is, if you look up at A two, sir, and I'll be happy to share my screen.
I got it.
All right, so if you look at A two, you'll see that the first floor remains the same. They are putting in foundation footings for the porch, and they're enclosing that small area kind of to the left near, near the existing deck. That's the area that's being enclosed.
But that's not how it's drawn. It's drawn. If you look at that first floor wall, the vertical wall on the first floor, come straight down, that's where the new four-foot foundation is. And then if you look to the left of that, that slab is what is encompassed by the, by that overhang, that enclosed overhang.
If we could elevate Warren Reed, I, I think he might be able to speak to this question better than I can. But I, I don't, I think my understanding is that the first floor is not expanding other than the, other than the porch that's being added, and I think that's reflected on the plans, both the site plan and the
Well, so is there somebody that can explain? It shows the existing foundation on the side cut of section B. That's what's there now.
Sure, so, so Mr. Reed has raised his hand in the audience. He's the builder, and I think he might be able to speak to this, to your specific question.
Sure, if we can get him elevated, please. That would be Warren Reed. He has his hand raised in the attendees list, Justin. Thank you. All right, Mr. Reed, we have you elevated, so you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Okay, in, in response to the front of the house, there's a seven-by thirteen-and-a-half, fourteen-foot foundation being put in under where the roof overhang is. Nothing encroaches the footprint that's existing there as far as the foundation is concerned. It's a small frost wall, which will be filled up as treated as part of the flood zone criteria. And in front of that is the footings for the front porch. Right now, the door is sideways on the front of the house where you approach, and we want to fill that in so that the front of the house is straight. Put the front porch on and then put, as you can see, on the front elevation on A one, we want to make that front door face Sherwood Drive. Right now, it faces the opposing street.
So, so on section B, Mr. Reed, where it says match to existing floor choices, is that to mean that that extension where that arrow is, you're adding floor choices to meet that four-foot frost wall?
Yes, underneath that covered porch, that first.
That's really not under the covered porch. That's, that's, the covered porch is extended beyond that, and the floor of the covered porch, ninety percent of that sits on the patio. I'm curious to know what supports that wall now if it's not being extended. If you look directly up from where that new proposed four-foot foundation is, there's a straight wall that goes to the second floor, then it can't leave us in a foot to support the new second floor. Is that existing the way it's shown right there now? If not, what's supporting that area now if not for that proposed four-foot frost wall?
Well, I, I think looking at it from this angle, it, it looks like it goes across the entire front of the house, and it doesn't. It actually stops where the fourteen feet in from the front left corner. It doesn't go all the way across.
Because when I did my site visit, I went out there and there were, because the question that brought me to this in the beginning was, and that's why I started off my, my questions with Mr. Clower, is it a second-floor addition? Because when I went out there and walked to the front of the house, there were two, there were two stakes that came out five or six feet off the house, and it said proposed addition, not porch. So when I looked at the side cut on section B, I had to ask myself what's supporting that area right now, if not that four-foot, so.
On the first floor, there's nothing there. That is where that, if you notice where the stakes were.
Right.
When you face the front of the house, left side, which would be next to the fireplace wall.
Mr. Reed, if I could interrupt you for just a moment, Attorney Clower, would, would it be possible for you to share your screen?
I'd be happy to.
Hold on. Sorry, Mr. Reed.
No problem.
Warren, just let me know what page you'd like me on.
Well, I think we can go right to section B, and you can see where the four-foot frost wall is. But there's, there's, there's nothing there that shows where it starts or ends, so let me look at.
So the end of that frost wall comes out where that pillar comes down to support the outside edge of that overhang, correct?
That's correct. Just where that overhang is, that's where the frost wall goes. It goes across from the front door that exists now. And let's see if we can get a, if you, if you go to, let's see what we got here.
I think the next page I might address it, might show you that.
And if you go, if you go back to A one for the front elevation,
Yeah.
You see, the porch is twenty-nine feet long, but what's existing there now where those three windows are to the left of the front door, that's actually set back four feet.
See that on, on A two, it shows the four sonotubes or the four, or the, not the sonotubes, but the, the pillars.
Right, that's to support the, the deck only.
And then it kicks back, it can't leave us back five feet, and then goes out to the end of the hop.
Where, where that deck is, there's a, there's a roof over it.
Okay.
Okay, and then where you see the hash marks.
Okay.
To the left side of the front door.
Yes, sir.
That is the only fill-in, and that is the exact dimension of where that covered porch is that you saw with the stakes were. That's the only part we're going to fill in with the frost wall.
Okay, so that, so that piece that you're doing right there, that, what is it, sixteen feet by five, that's going to be enclosed?
Yes.
So, Mr. Clower, what does that add to the first-floor calculations for square footage?
Oh.
It's about ninety-one square feet.
Is that, is that demonstrated on this plan or the proposal, the added?
So if you look at the site plan, sir, the site plan, it actually reflects, there's, there's two, an area of the deck that's being removed at the rear of the house, as well as the existing shed. So the, the net result is a decrease in square footage.
All right, so that's, that's calculated in the twenty-six point five percent.
That's correct.
When we're done. Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Let's see, was there anyone else? Do we get ready? James, anything? All right, any other board questions? All right, we will turn it to public comment. If there's anyone on here there who has a question, comment, or concern regarding the project, go ahead and hit the raised hand button within the attendees list, or I'm sorry, the, yeah, the attendees list, and we will get to you shortly. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone for public comment. Back to the board, and if anyone does have any public comment, I'll be sure to elevate them. But back to the board for the meantime, any follow-up questions of any kind?
Motion to close.
Okay, motion to close made by Ken, second by Ed. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the hearing is closed. Would the board like to proceed with the project?
Motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, seconded by Scott. We'll go on to findings.
Two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, two forty-two sixteen, not more substantially detrimental. Properties located in the Great Pond Overlay District in a flood zone AE twelve. Current lot coverage is twenty-seven percent. There'll be a slight decrease to twenty-six point five percent. They're moving a portion of an existing deck and also removing a shed in order to maintain that lot coverage. Bedroom count is two and is remaining two. I need to list all the, the non-conformities to setbacks. Another side yard setback is eight.
Aren't they reducing the setback on the backside to, with the removal of the, the deck? The stairs on the deck, aren't they?
I, I didn't think they were changing the.
Are the stairs remain in that part, the other portion? It says the existing deck to be removed, and that has the stairs on it, which is the twenty-one point eight measurement.
That, that area is not non-conforming. The, the area to the south, the bulkhead setback is non-conforming. And then to the north, the Sandpiper Circle is twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three and a half on that.
Oh, I see, okay.
Also, but that they, they submitted a structural engineer's letter showing that could support the second floor. Submitted a FEMA worksheet, an individual appraisal, showing they meet the fifty percent rule, and also whole calculation showing that it falls within calculations of the neighborhood.
Nice plan.
Okay, anything else for findings? Conditions?
Well, the Water Department will have the, the water service needs to be changed. Put in the conditions from the engineering. The shed that is being removed, not to be replaced. Per plans.
Okay, anything else for conditions?
Did you put in, in the findings that they submitted a load chart on the plans? The structural engineer had a load chart in there?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Very good. All right, so that motion to approve with conditions was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Okay, up next, we have application sixty-six dash twenty Burnham, eight Worcester Court in Falmouth.
So application number sixty-six dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Donald S. and Laura J. Burnham of Brookline, Mass. Have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct dormers in an addition, connecting the dwelling and existing garage, increasing lot coverage by structures and subject property known as eight Worcester Court, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. There's a note here by Scott McGann, because this follows under an exception. The septic system here is designed for four bedrooms. However, the definition of bedroom in the Title V Code states where the total number of rooms for a single-family dwelling exceeds eight, not including bathrooms, hallways, and unfinished cellars and unheated storage areas. The number of bedrooms presumed shall be calculated by dividing the total number of rooms by two and then rounding down to the next whole number. The existing house has nine rooms. The two thousand eighteen septic design is for four bedrooms, is suitable for the existing six-bedroom house, because nine rooms divided by two equals four and a half. Rounded down to four is what would be required of the septic. And that is why that, what was permitted and installed for smaller septic than what is in existence. The proposed plan shows a reduction in the total number of rooms, eliminating a bedroom. So he would not consider this an increase in flow with a reduction in bedroom count, even though the septic design was suitable for the higher number of rooms. Therefore, the septic system is suitable for the project. Engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Worcester Court is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations were proposed in the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project was not directing any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. Fire Department has no issue with the project is drawn. Planning has no comment. Water Department has no comment. Assessors Department, this includes lot eight and half of lot ten. And that's, that's all we have for referrals. Oh, and there was a, there is a lot comparison worksheet submitted showing all the properties in the general area.
All right, thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this application will be the regular voting members. And once again, we have Attorney Clower on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Again, members of the board, unfortunately, you are going to be stuck with me for this one and the next hearing as well, so I apologize now. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amit Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants Donald and Laura Burnham. They are the owners of Eight Worcester Court. And they are here tonight seeking permission to make an addition to the existing dwelling on their property. This will constitute enclosing the connected but open breezeway between the house and the garage area or the accessory structure. Eight Worcester Court is located in the heart of Falmouth Heights. It's on a lot that is eight thousand eight hundred and forty square feet, and it's located in the residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a one-and-a-half-story dwelling and a semi-detached accessory structure. There's a total of six bedrooms and a combined footprint of just over two thousand square feet, twenty-three percent lot coverage. It's, uh, non-conforming to front yard setback. Uh, it's eleven point eight feet to the stairs and seventeen, uh, point seven feet to the dwelling from the front yard where twenty-five is required. Uh, the side yard setback is seven point nine feet where ten is required. And the lot coverage by structure is twenty-three where twenty is allowed by right and that's twenty-five percent by special permit. The Browns purchased this property two years ago and are in the process of making it their full-time residence. They're proposing to, uh, proposing an addition that will enclose, uh, the existing breezeway and, and a little bit beyond that in order to connect and combine, uh, the dwelling and the accessory structure. Uh, there's going to be a dormer added on the front of the home, uh, for the two existing bedrooms that are upstairs in order to improve those spaces. And, uh, their request doesn't allow, it does include an allowance for a future shed, which is factored into the lot coverage. Uh, and this is done to address the limited basement space. Uh, the result of this application is, is a slight expansion of the footprint, although it's not detrimentally so. Um, there's the existing non-conforming setbacks are not affected. There's, there was a decrease in the number of bedrooms from six to five. Uh, and there's no change to the ridge height of twenty-one feet, ten inches. Due to the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit, uh, under two forty-three C. And in that situation, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Uh, the board should consider the standards of two forty-two sixteen, whether this creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs use and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this instance, there's no new non-conformity that's created. The existing non-conforming setbacks are unaffected. Uh, the lot coverage by structure does, uh, increase slightly to twenty-four point nine percent, but it's eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit under two forty sixty-nine E. Uh, related to that, in residential C zoning districts, lot coverage by structure, uh, over twenty percent but below twenty-five percent requires a special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E. And in that situation, we're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. The effects of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, in this case, there's no impact on views and vistas, uh, from public ways. There's no change to shadow as the ridge heights remain unaffected. There's no negative effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. It's a bedroom count actually decreases. Um, and we did submit that lot comparison worksheet, which looked at the forty-two properties within the three hundred foot radius. Uh, of those forty-two, uh, twenty-five of those houses had larger gross floor areas and nine had larger footprints. The proposed lot coverage by structure that we're proposing is twenty-four point nine percent, which is below the average lot covered by structure of twenty-seven percent in, of those houses. Uh, as proposed, we're, we're really effectively in a medium, median of, uh, homes in the area. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions for the, uh, for the owners. It, it, it's a much better utilization of the space, connecting the now detached accessory structure to the, uh, primary dwelling. It will not create any new dimensional non-conformities and, and with the issuance of a special permit will eliminate the existing non-conformity uh, for lot coverage by structure. This does meet the requirements of sections two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-sixteen. I believe this board can and should issue, uh, special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Uh, we'll turn it to board questions. Ed, anything?
I have no questions.
Okay. Ken?
Oops, not right now.
Bob, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So, Mr. Clower, I'm, um, I'm just very familiar with the property because it's been sold many times over the years. So through open housing stuff, I've been in it. So I know that a previous owner had put a kitchenette in that garage unit and at some point finished that off. Were there any permits ever for that?
Uh, quite honestly, I'm not sure. Uh, the, I'm, I'm not aware of any kitchenette in that area now. But there have been a number of permits that were pulled over the years, but I, I don't know if, uh, uh, I don't know if that answers your question, but I, I'm not aware of any kitchenette in that property now, uh, in that accessory area now.
So, 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 so currently in that, that little open space, I guess it's like a sitting room area? There was a bath and next to it, there used to be a fridge and a wet bar sink and a counter. Is that still there?
Not that I'm aware of. We do have the designer and the homeowner on, uh, in the audience tonight. We would like to ask them. But we are seeking to combine those two, uh, those two structures, so it's going to end up being one, one structure at the end of our proposal.
Yeah, so if, if you could just, either the homeowner or someone, just, just let us know if, if any of that is still in existence.
In, in the audience, we have, um, uh, bear with me, I got a poll participant list. Uh, Donald S. Burnham is the homeowner. He's raised his hand and, uh,
All right, Mr. Burnham, you've been elevated. You just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the, the, what we call the guest house with the, uh, the accessory space, in fact, does have a kitchenette. Uh, the kitchenette just has, uh, cabinets. It's got a wet, I guess you call it a wet bar. I wouldn't even call it a wet bar. It's a small sink. Uh, but there's no stove. There's a very small unhooked refrigerator. As far as permits, I just have no idea if anybody pulled permits on that. And that project by the prior owners was, uh, completed, I believe, four years ago, twenty sixteen. So our purpose with this renovation is really just to integrate that space into the main house and just make it more useful.
Very good. Uh, any questions for Mr. Burnham? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Burnham.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's all I had.
All right, Ken, I think you were.
Yeah, I did have one. I see. Proposed future shed, and you're going to, if I understand correctly, you're going to twenty-four point nine percent lot coverage?
That's correct.
So does that include this proposed future shed?
It does.
Okay.
All right, Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, James. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Clower, um, are you, it, the plans read that you guys are, uh, intending to do away with the exterior bulkhead?
That's correct. There's going to be a hatch, um, if, if you look at, I believe it's page six of the plans is, um, sheet A one point one, there is a, uh, a, a floor hatch shown in that mudroom laundry area.
But there's nothing to the outside wall, though.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, uh, public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, uh, go ahead and hit the raised hand icon, and we will get to you shortly. Give it a minute to see if anything pops up. Okay, not seeing anything. Uh, any last call for any follow-up questions from the board? All right, seeing none. There be a motion?
So I just have a, a, a brief discussion on, um, the, the garage space that was finished off, and, and I know that these people don't have any intention of using it, but, um, there has been previous use in the past that that was used as a separate rentable unit, and I think at one time it was also in a Airbnb um, over time, um, and it's easy to convert these areas to separate kitchens. So I know in the past, we've been doing a, um, a deed restriction regarding cooking facilities and making sure that the property remains as a single family. Um, and that's something that I think the board should consider.
I think that's a very valid point, Bob.
We haven't closed yet, right?
No, not yet. We're still open. Uh, Attorney Clower, would your, would, sorry, would your client be amenable to that?
Uh, I haven't discussed it with, with my client yet. He is still elevated, um, just, uh, for him to understand what that would mean. Mr. Burnham, just, uh, so the way these deed restrictions have worked, just saying that, you know, that the property will be, uh, a single, used as a single-family dwelling. The last one we did, did have, um, language of saying until such time, you know, if and when the applicant sought, obtained permits to do so. But, you know, we really are integrating this into the home. This is going to become much more cohesive than it presently is. And I think that, that will go a long way towards alleviating that fear for the board. Uh, but, Mr. Burnham, is that something to be willing to, uh, entertain?
Um, yes, it would. In fact, if I can give you a little bit of, brief bit of history. I, I understand, just anecdotally, that the guest house, whatever you call it, had been rented separately in years. I don't know how many years passed, but it was a separate apartment, uh, but our intention is to make both structures, again, integrated into one single-family residence. Never our intention to, uh, have anything other than a single-family residence ever again. So I, if I understand the restriction, I'm, I'm entirely, uh, in favor of that.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Burnham. And Attorney Clower, my apologies for putting you on the spot. I, uh, I, I had assumed you may have discussed that previously with the client.
Not, not on this one, but, but, uh, it's a certainly a fair assumption.
Understood. All right, uh, a- anything else prior to closing this hearing from the board?
They can motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to close made by Scott and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote once again. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
And TJ, I. So the hearing is closed. Uh, would the board like to proceed?
So I'm motion approved with conditions.
I'll second Mr. Dugan's motion.
All right, thank you, Bob and Scott. Move on to findings.
Uh, first of all, in the findings, I think we need to include the explanation from the health agent regarding the septic system, because a lot of people get confused by that.
Absolutely.
The property is, uh, as planned to remain as a single family. They're trying to integrate the finished garage space into the house. Two forty dash.
Yeah, identified at that hundred square foot, uh, shed too, Bob?
Yes, so we'll have that there's a, they're proposing a hundred square foot shed that was worked into the lot coverage calculations. Uh, two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty nine E, two forty dash two sixteen. Uh, need to put in the, um, the non-conformities on the setbacks, the eleven eight, the eleven seven, seven nine. Uh, current lot coverage is twenty-three percent, um, and they're asking to go to twenty-four point nine percent. Twenty-five percent is the max allowed by special permit. Property was six bedrooms, had six bedrooms contained in the property. They're now going to five, so they're alleviating a bedroom.
It has no, no objections to a deed restriction. That would be in the findings, right?
Yep, add that to the findings. And then also add that the new owner was aware, um, that they had, that the previous owners had used the garage air in the past as a rental. Also just put in the findings that, um, per testimony of the owner, there is, uh, just currently a, a kitchenette area. It does not have, uh, cooking facilities. It does have a refrigerator, a sink, and cabinets.
All right, anything else for findings?
Uh, any of the.
That wants to go in there, Bob?
Yep, yep, that, that, that list that we gave, that, that Scott did the explanation. We should also put in the findings. They submitted the lot comparison worksheet. And it fell, in the, uh, lot structure fell within the area.
Very good. Anything for conditions?
I just want to double check, um, I guess, uh, the comments by engineering. Uh, also a, um, a deed restriction that'll be remain as a single family, and there'll be no additional cooking facilities, uh, in that garage space that's finished off. Also put that, a, um, the hundred square foot proposed shed as shown on plan would be allowed in the future, but that is the only size that would be allowed, the hundred square feet. Uh, where they are going to twenty-four point nine, it's just under twenty-five percent. I think we should do an as-built for lot coverage.
Okay. Uh, I'll bow nothing, nothing lar- larger than the proposed shed, because I think that would.
Yeah, only, only the hundred square foot proposed shed as shown on plan would be allowed. If they choose to put it in.
Rinse station doesn't have to be tied into the septic, does it?
No, because it's got no roof.
But if it's a shower, it does.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's identified on the plan as a rinse station, so.
As a rinse station.
All right, anything else for conditions?
No, that's it. I guess, I guess Kevin would, uh, would submit the deed restriction regarding the kitchenette stuff to town council, and then they can review it and then submit the restriction.
Uh, quick question. Uh, we, we had one that was just approved by town council, uh, for a project over on Allen Ave, Ms. Stockman. Um, if I resubmit the, eventually that form, uh, but with the revised information, would that be sufficient?
Uh, that would be my understanding. You know, we will, uh, just for format purposes, send it to town council for approval. Yep.
All right. Anything else for either finding or conditions?
Just per plans.
Per plans. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob.
You know, uh, bu- bu- before you close, the only other thing is, um, Worcester Court's really tight in that area, so maybe we should just put to try to keep all construction equipment and materials on, on property site.
Sure.
Uh, no parking on the, um, public park. And it's a one-way there, so you can't really block the roadway.
It shouldn't really be that bad, Bob. There'll be no heavy equipment there, though, either, though. It's, you know, that's.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because in the last couple of weeks, there's a lot of, there's a lot of construction going on in the heights, and it seems like
Right.
everyone's parking everything in the road for some reason. I don't know why.
There was quite a bit of driveway in there for dumpsters and all of that, though, when I was there.
I think they'll have enough room.
Yeah, they, they do have a good amount of room on, on site there. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Burnham and Attorney Clower, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, up next we have application sixty-seven dash twenty Carl Trustee, forty-four Grand Ave in Falmouth.
So, application number sixty-seven dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws. You are hereby notified that Deidre Carl, trustee of Milton, Mass, has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the single-family dwelling and detached garage, adding living space above on subject property known as forty-four Grand Avenue, Falmouth. Uh, first of all, they did receive a waiver, um, from the demolition delay bylaw from, uh, Historic Commission. Uh, from Health, uh, forty-four Grand Ave Project, uh, in front of Z B A. His comments are, the current bedroom count is four, the proposed bedroom count is five. The proposed septic system is sized for five bedrooms. That would be sufficient as a reserve area is shown on the plan and appears to allow for an increase in flow. The property is not located in the coastal pond overlay district and is not required to have a denitrifying septic system as required in the accessory. as required in the accessory apartment bylaw for increase in flow. From engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Grand Ave is a public right of way in this area. The driveway alterations will require filing a permit with the engineering division. What is shown would not be approved. The portion of the apron between the driveway for this parcel and the abutment to the southwest must be closed as shown below, and there's a depiction. Since the area in question is off the parcel and within the town right of way, we defer to the board if the plan should be revised for their approval or if the driveway permit requirement as a condition of the approval is acceptable. We requested the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Drywells are proposed for the roof and is noted on the submitted plans. Four, where this is a small lot with structures close to the abutters, we recommend that the erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the public right of way and the abutting properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work. Include proposed erosion and sediment controls as described in the included document. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the attached soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document referencing to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning Board of Appeals, who is the permitting authority for this project. Five, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per section ninety-nine one. A fixing of legible numbers required in time limited for compliance. Conservation Commission voted to approve the proposed project under a negative two determination RDA, and they've attached it. From the assessors department. This includes lots one eleven and part of one oh nine. And that's all we have right now for the referrals.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this will be the regular voting members. And for the applicant, once again, we have Attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the last time this evening, my name is Kevin Clower. And I'm with Amet Clower Law from here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant, Deidre Carl, the trustee of the forty-four Grand Avenue Realty Trust. She's here tonight seeking to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling and garage. This property, forty-four Grand Ave, was located in the center of Falmouth Heights. It's one block removed from the ball field and very close to the intersection of Grand Ave and Central Park. The lot is six thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet. It's located in residential C zoning district. And it is in the AE twelve flood zone. Presently, the lot contains one and a half story, four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with detached garage. Total footprint of sixteen hundred and fifty-five square feet. The structures are non-conforming in a number of ways, including front yard setback, being eighteen point three feet where twenty-five is required. Side yard setback, five, five point two feet on the west and three point four feet on the east, where ten is required. And rear yard setback to the garage, which is seven point nine feet where ten is required. In addition, the lot coverage by structures is non-conforming at twenty-five point six percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent by special permit. The applicant's family has owned this for over twenty years. And the house needs pretty significant repairs. Given the fact that it's, given its location in a flood zone and the scope of repairs necessary. Doing so would constitute a significant improvement, which requires compliance with the flood zone standards and the elevation of the structure. As such, the applicants, the applicant rather, is seeking to raise and rebuild with, with new structures, a new dwelling and detached garage, which will be compliant with those requirements and will better suit the needs of her family. So pursuant to the building code and FEMA regulations, all habitable space and mechanicals must be at least one foot above the flood elevation. That, that's elevation thirteen because we're in an AE twelve. And that ends up being not that high above grade, actually. What's proposed is a new four-bedroom dwelling and a new detached garage with living space above. The proposed ridge height is twenty-five feet, eleven inches, which is well below thirty-five feet that's allowed by right. There was a new five-bedroom septic system that is proposed. And, and what's kind of a unique situation, all of the existing non-conformities here are either going to be eliminated or improved. The front yard setbacks eliminated, the house will be twenty-eight point eight feet from the street. The side yard setbacks are improved, eight to eight feet on the west and eight point one feet on the east, which is an improvement of three and five feet respectively. The rear yard setback to the garage is eliminated as it'll be over ten feet from the lot line. And the lot coverage by structure will be decreased down to twenty-five percent, which with the issuance of a special permit eliminates that non-conformity as well. The area above the garage is, is additional living space, but it's not proposed as a separate dwelling or an accessory apartment. There are no cooking facilities in there. And based on the last conversation we had, I understand that the board might well be looking for a deed restriction. And that is something that I did discuss with this client in advance, and she said she'd be amenable to if maybe. Due to the existing non-conformities, despite the improvements, this does still require special permits under two forty-three C and two forty sixty-nine E. I hate to repeat myself because you've heard me say all this twice tonight, but I think for the record, I probably should. Under two forty-three C, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And the board should consider whether or not the alterations create any new dimensional non-conformities impair views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. This proposal, under this proposal, is no new dimensional non-conformities created. In fact, there's improvements to the side yard setback to the east and west and a complete elimination of the non-conforming setback to the front yard, to the side yard and the lot coverage by structure with the issuance of a special permit. We are going to be at twenty-five percent lot coverage, which in a residential C zoning district does require a special permit pursuant to section two forty sixty-nine E. In that situation, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. The effects of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and effective nitrogen on coastal invasions. In this case, there's no negative impact to the views and vistas from the public ways. Shadow should not be affected. It's pretty well screened and there's vacant lot to the, to the west. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal invasions because we're, despite adding a bedroom or improving the existing septic system to a five-bedroom, which will accommodate all of the bedrooms being proposed. And as to the size and height of the structures, we did look at the twenty-eight nearby properties within three hundred foot radius. Of those twenty-eight properties, twenty-one have a larger footprint and eighteen have a larger gross floor area. This even as proposed remains one of the more hard, modest homes in the area. As was noted, this project was approved by the Historical Commission for waiver of the demolition delay. I think it's, I hope it's clear that the project as proposed is a significant improvement over the existing non-conformities. As noted, it conforms to the flood zone regulations, which is something that we want from a public policy standpoint. I think it'd be hard pressed to say that what's being proposed is substantially more detrimental than what exists. And in fact, is a significant improvement. It is seldom that I've seen a project that, that makes so many improvements over existing non-conformities. I was really kind of pleased and excited when I started reviewing the plans. For these reasons and for these considerations, I'd ask that this board grant a special permit and I'd of course be happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Clower. And we did have some technical issues there, but Mary Berry is back with us. If she could be re-elevated, please, Justin. All right. Go on to board questions. Ed, do you have anything?
Nothing. No.
Okay, Ken?
No questions.
Bob?
So Kevin, where are the mechanicals for the space in the garage for heat, et cetera? And while you're looking at that, if you could also point out where the second means of aggress is, because this does have a bedroom and a second unit and on the on the plot plan where you show the layout, the plot plan identifies a proposed deck and the proposed deck doesn't show any elevations or the layout.
We have in the audience is Allison Pava. She's the designer for this project. If we could elevate Allison.
Hi, Allison. Looks like we just lost her. Did she drop to the attendees list?
Or where she went?
Not seeing her.
She comes back on.
Anything that you can address yourself in the meantime?
I'm happy, I'm happy to try. My, my fear is that I'm, I'm shooting off the cuff a little bit and I'd rather give you the exact information.
We can wait till she.
If we could, if we could elevate Grania Gallagher. That would be great.
Sure. Let's do that then. Grania, you're currently on mute, so you'll have to unmute yourself.
Grania, it doesn't look like you would expect.
Just to answer the questions on the mechanicals, that is going to be in the attic space above the garage. There's enough room for a heat pump. So that will be how we're going to be heating cooling that space.
And where is the second means of aggress?
As far as the garage?
Yeah, because you've placed a bedroom in the garage. So what's a bedroom if he has in the garage? They need two means of aggress.
So we were intending to have one of the windows in the door be the egress based off the size, so.
So the, a window on a second floor?
Correct. As long as it meets a certain size.
And if they jump out the window, what happens? Not to, not to make a joke.
I'd rather have broken legs than, than in a fire.
It's the same. It's, it is, it's under the same pretense as a second floor into a main living house. It's a, it's something, it's in the past, we've done it many projects and Rod Palmer has been, we've been fine with that process.
All right. So I'd want to hear something from the building commissioner on that. And Mark, so you looked at plans. So this is just a basic question. So we're seeing this a lot. So on the plan, you have labeled physically kitchen. So why are they labeling it a kitchen? If they're not planning on any kind of cooking facilities?
Based off of the, and that's something that's, you know, my, my own fault for the staff labeling things. Anytime they put a little fridge and a wet bar, they have certain tags that the designers and architects pull up, so they're just pulling that tag up. But again, this is a project that we were happy to put a deed restriction, a deed restriction on. It's absolutely intended to be a one family that has, it's been in the family for a while. That is what they want for the property.
And the other question that Kevin didn't know yet, so on your plot plan, you show a proposed deck on the front of the garage unit and it doesn't show up anywhere else?
That was a proposed deck that they were debating putting on that garage based off of the concept of if they were to put that, we would have to come back and do administrative approval, but we didn't want to make sure we included that in the law coverage. And that's how we got to the twenty-five percent.
So the twenty-five percent is the proposed, is if they have the proposed deck?
That's correct. So that was a debate. The client wasn't sure if they did want to do that deck based off their going back and forth. We wanted to make sure we calculated it at the twenty-five percent. So they wouldn't get in a situation where if they did want to add that, it would go over twenty-five percent.
So if that's something they may be proposing, we need to see that shown on the rest of the plans versus just the, the layout.
Yeah. So if they, if they decide to put that on, we would be coming back. We would have to come back either for administrative approval or another hearing.
Then we would have to see a plan that says no deck. You know what I mean? If, if we see a plan that says a proposed deck and we approve it, and then you're saying, well, they're not going to do it. They'd have to come back anyways, then it, it just shouldn't be on our plan. If they want the deck, fine. Say they want the deck and do the twenty-five percent. But these, I don't want to get another situation that we've done on other projects in the past where something may or may not be proposed and may or may not happen.
Yeah.
Better off, if they don't want it, don't put it on. If they want it, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good, good point.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Bob. James, anything?
No, thank you.
Mary?
No comment.
Thank you, Mary. Scott? You're currently muted, Scott.
You know where I cut my teeth, Kevin, and I was always taught to start my comments with a question. So my question to you is, you know that I'm very thorough on these, on these plans. That being said, I want to commend whole team that put this plan together. This is, in my personal opinion, this is one of the best plans for this type of site that I've seen in a long time, answering a lot of the questions the first time. Centralizing the structures, addressing the setback issues, drainage, sightlines. I just, I just want to commend that whole team and let you know that personally, I think this is a beautiful plan.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to vote in favor of it.
Well said, Scott.
Thank you.
We will turn it over. I think that does it for board questions. We'll turn it over to public comment. If anyone has a question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we will get to you shortly. Okay, I'm currently not seeing any raised hands. Is there any sort of follow-up from the board?
Yeah, I. I guess I guess the only comment I would make is that I, I understand what you said about the means of aggress. I, I just want to hear from the building commissioner on it. Because we had a similar project. It looked very similar in a separate unit. And everyone thought it was fine. And then the building commissioner didn't allow it. He didn't go with the window. And I think the admin, I had asked the administrator something earlier, and I think she also spoke to the building commissioner. So I think we need something stated from the building commissioner regarding the second means of aggress, especially where this is at twenty-five percent max. I'm glad they, they'll go with the deed restriction. I think specifically when you have a layout like this where it looks like a separate dwelling unit completely and there's no connection. So that's important, but, but I would like to hear something from the building commissioner on feedback on that because we, we've gotten a lot of comments. And I'm not pointing out here, but during hearings where people are stating what the building commissioner has said. And then we have later been told by the building commissioner, no, that's not exactly what I meant or that's not what happened. And I don't want to get any confusion anymore with these back and forths, you know, between departments. I'd rather just have it straightened out.
You know, I did. I did speak with the building commissioner today. In fairness, he did point out that a second means of aggress is required. He did not offer that a window would suffice for that. So I don't have that specific clarification.
As a question, I think we can certainly, we're happy to pose to the building commissioner. We can do that, I think, relatively quickly. I, it sounds as though what we're looking for is, is, is a very minor change to the plan and clarification on that one issue, which I think we can address in a day or two. So if I, if I can be forward and bold enough to suggest maybe we could look for a very brief extension and have a, look to have a positive motion drafted in, in that timeframe. That would be kind of a win-win forever, you on.
So the only remaining issue would be that egress there.
I'd certainly be in favor of that with everything else that's been taken care of. I think that, um.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, to get Mr. Dugan. Yeah, to get Mr. Dugan's concerns with a positive motion drafted, I think is, is totally acceptable in this case.
What's the, what's the earliest date, Noreen, we can get for?
I do have a meeting on the 21st. It, it will be mobbed, but I think if everything is in place, if you were just going to vote. Just so just clarifying for that at the garage, you're going to remove the deck on the site plan, correct? Matches the architecturals?
We would either remove the deck or add the deck in to make sure it did reflect it. So I may recommend that if they're going to do it, now's the time to put that on there. So one or the other, it will be very clear for the next meeting.
With the rail design on the front deck of that house, you know, a wrought iron is fire escape wouldn't look bad on that accessory plate, that accessory building.
Yeah. And I think there's different options if, and, and I'll be happy to meet with Rod Palmer tomorrow. Or as soon as he's available. And get clarity on that and then make sure our design meets what he's looking for.
Just if you do add any structure for second floor egress, you're at 25% lot coverage. So you're going to have to worry about that.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned the, the wrought iron ladder well, so fire escape.
That's right. And that's what we'd have to, we'll, we'll have to look at that and evaluate it because definitely adding a second staircase in its entirety would be very difficult for anything on that second floor. So I think being looking at other forms of egress is going to be important and determining what rod is comfortable with and what is allowable.
What is the soft, what's the trim height on the first floor of that anyway, of this accessory?
I'd have to look at the exact. We have the ridge height. I don't have the soft height.
It's, uh, so just slightly over nine feet, probably.
So it's not, it'd be a nine foot, it would be a nine foot climb down from there out of one of those oversized windows, right?
That's right. And we could easily, you know, there's different options that I'm, I'm aware of that would work. I just think it's going to be to, to answer Bob's question, I think a meeting with Rod Palmer to get clarity and then update a drawing that you guys would have for the next meeting would be a great way for us to move forward.
Keeping in mind that the, the lot coverage, you have taken duration with that adjustment, right?
And I think that whatever we add, we have to find a place to take it away to stay. We wanted to, one of the things that we tried to do in designing this project is make it more conforming and move setbacks and decrease lot coverage. And we're trying to design something that would get.
Oh, no, 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 that's certainly apparent. That's certainly apparent. Um. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close.
Second. Very good. So.
Just as a point of clarification, do, do we want it to be closed if I'm still going to be submitting a revised plan?
Why don't you, why don't you just leave it open and vote?
I think instead the motion should be that we instruct Noreen to draft a positive motion incorporating any changes associated with the building commissioner's recommendations for second egress.
Thought that's what we were talking about, but I'm all for that.
We will take this up, I guess, March 1, or what is it, January 20?
All right. So that's the motion, keeping the hearing open with those.
We're starting at 3:30 that day, Terry.
We'd, we'd get a whole lot done if we started that earlier. All right. So the motion on the floor was made by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, I'll give that to Bob. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed, Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Whoops, did you say me?
Yes.
Ah, thanks. Ken Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. Bob?
Yeah, Robert Dugan, I.
James? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, James, you were associated on, on this. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the motion passes unanimously. We will see everyone January 21st with the revised changes.
We really appreciate your time. Thank you for putting up with me for three hearings in a row and I apologize, but again, thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. And that does it for our public hearings under our open meeting items. We have voting the minutes from December 3rd and December 10th.
And we're tabling the 10th.
I figured. All right. So December 3rd. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Yeah, make a motion to accept them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Roll call vote. Ed?
Did we lose Ed?
He's still thinking about it.
No, what happened? Where we at? Roll call vote, Ed. Voting, voting in favor of the minutes.
On your motion.
Ed, Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Whoops, Ken Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
James?
James Morse.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So those minutes passed unanimously and December 10th is tabled. Uh, up next, board administrative approval request for insubstantial change, Lucasfield LLC Beach Plum Path 430 Lucasfield Road, which is application 6-19 modifications to previously approved plans.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to sit this one out.
Thank you, Scott. So Scott is setting it out as he said, and I will appoint Mary as a voting number on this. Uh, Noreen, I don't know if you have any introductory remarks for this one?
Sure. So, uh, the board may recall that there were some changes proposed to Beach Plum Path. Due to board votes or prior to board votes where it was potentially going to be a substantial change deemed. The application was appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. So the board's previous meeting that was scheduled was not held because the application was appealed to Housing Appeals Committee. Housing Appeals Committee has through, I believe, some mediation determined that they would like the board to reconsider as an insubstantial change. A couple of items with Beach Plum Path, the first of which being three market rate units and one affordable unit are proposed to be slightly amended design, which they are identifying as Unit B. The Unit B dwellings will have a quote bonus room over the garage. The last original filing that we had, I think, was apparently a mistype that they had quoted that it was going to be some 700 square feet. They now have indicated that that will be some 200 square feet. They have also asked to finish part or full basements. And they've asked for some interior room changes upon request of owners. But with no window or door changes to the exterior. They are willing to keep the same number of bedrooms. And they have offered to eliminate all requests for a bonus room in lieu of the rear deck. So the board is, is essentially being asked to reconsider this as an insubstantial change.
So Noreen, as an insubstantial change, that we're only looking at two items, we're looking at the addition of the bedroom over the garage.
Well, it won't, it won't be a bedroom. They are asking specifically for a bonus room. If there is any shifting of bedroom space, et cetera, they do understand that they are strictly limited to three bedrooms. So this is meant to be, you know, a family room, an office.
So does it meet, so I guess my question is, without seeing a plan, does it, does it meet the definition of a bedroom? I mean, how easy it is to change a layout once somebody's living in the properties?
Right. So, you know, I certainly think that you could condition it as a caveat that it's explicit that there not be privacy doors other than for the three approved bedrooms and that the rest of the space.
So can we deed, so can we deed restrict to three bedrooms?
I would think that's fine.
Is, is, as far as finishing off basements? I'm a little confused there where if you finish off the basement again, they would have the ability to change their layouts. You know, I've never, I've just never seen anything that's open ended that let us do this and then we'll just change the floor plans as we see fit and we don't come back again. You know, we've seen other projects that, you know, weren't 40Bs where, you know, I remember one way back where they had it was an apartment project and they changed those layouts and the layout changes actually made it easier for somebody to convert it into you know, non-allowed space. So, so how can we, how can we look at something without being submitted any kind of a plan of what their layout changes would be proposed? Without saying that, you know, maybe they could say that if we finish the basement, we would have the opportunity to do either this layout or that layout on the first floor. You know, give us an example of the two choices they have versus just saying we can just change what we want.
I mean, I suppose the other thing that you could potentially do would be prior to sign off on a building permit that internally, a Board of Health and myself and Building Department were, the proposed plan changes to ensure.
So my, so I guess my question is, and it's hard without the here, but if all the, of all the units have been sold and there being public knowledge, they're saying that they've all been sold.
Yep.
So if the, all the units have been sold, then each one of those potential buyers has to have already known what layout they're getting on the house. Because they would have sold it based on a specific plan. So if he is suggesting, the developer is suggesting that he could change layouts, those must be layouts that were offered as part of whatever the purchases are. So he must have specific layouts that go with contracts versus because they're sold. It's not if, I could understand if he was marketing these for sale. But in this case, he's already sold all the units.
Right.
So with selling all the units and I assume he's gone into PNS and if he's gone into PNS, they had to attach plans and specs. So why doesn't he supply the specs that went with the sales? And then if any of those differ, we could just sign off on the individual plants. Other than that, we're flying blind.
So is that, would that be a, and a review that you would expect to take place in-house, i.e.?
To be, to be honest, I, I think we should actually have this information now to consider the layout changes. Because this has to be known information. It can't be something that he's going to do in the future. He's got contracts.
So in other words, we don't have sufficient information.
Yeah.
Make an administrative change.
He hasn't submitted anything. And he has any, and he has, and the units are, are being purchased.
Well, I guess the other thing is that if the board is considering entertaining, allowing interior changes slash finish type of thing. You could request that that be supplied to you and it could, I presume, still be considered as an insubstantial change, but that you're going to review it?
See, what I think should happen is I think we should answer them that, that they have sold the units, the units that they've sold are based on a specific layout because that's what they're selling. So we would like them to supply to us the layouts and plans for, that go with the contracts on all of the sold units. Because the one thing that bothered me on the marketing was you know, they had a very public website, which was great. You know, you could go there and you could see what was available and had some great architecturals. But then it showed two things. It showed the, the subdivision layout that we approved. And it showed one floor plan. It offered sending homeowners docks and additional floor plans, but those were not publicly accessed. You would have to ask for permission. So I just, I just feel that and it may be fine. They may have sold these with layouts that we would think we have no issues with at all. But if they don't supply to us the layouts and the plans that are going with the sales of the units, we are flying blind. We have no idea what he's promised in the contracts. And most of these units were signed up, oh my God, I don't know what months ago? Weren't some of them even signed up last August or something? I mean, it's not like they're, these are our recent, they've been on for a while. So when somebody doesn't supply that and then asks for some substantial change, it makes me think, well, why aren't they supplying it?
Doesn't it also seem like it's retroactive? If they've already done it and they've already sold it, once again, we had other ones like this. They're coming in for a insubstantial change request after they've already taken the action.
After the fact.
That isn't the way this is supposed to operate. Unless I'm, I'm wrong.
No, I mean, Mary and Bob, I agree with you both 100%. Just in terms of this actual request, Noreen, is, is this a court ordered remand or how? What exactly is this before us tonight?
So it's my.
Negotiated or?
It's my understanding that now it's been a while, so I'm trying to
No worries.
recollect exactly what was said. It's, it's my understanding from town council that it was Housing Appeals Committee's recommendation that it go back before the, the board as informal. I guess the question here is that, so.
I guess we need more information.
Do you want to continue this to get the information, the specific information to vote that? Or does the developer go back to Housing Appeals Committee and say, you know, the board didn't vote it because they didn't have sufficient information, in which case I presume Housing Appeals could say, well, give them the proposed changes that you're looking for. I'm, I'm not clear on that piece.
Of course, not proposed changes. It's already implemented changes. If they sold the units that way.
We don't have any of, we have nothing showing any of the changes that have already been done, well, had, that have already been contracted. And without seeing documentation, it doesn't allow the board to make an informed decision. So we could continue requesting it. And then if he goes, if they go back to Hack and Hack asks us the question, we say the same thing. We just need the information in order to make an informed decision.
Right. We did have the information for the bonus room over the garage. It was shown as.
The problem with it is they keep linking this layout changes.
Right. So maybe it's best that the, the board take no action, or maybe we actually vote requesting additional information in order to make an informed decision on this request.
Yeah, I think we should request all the layouts or all the plans that go with all the individual sold contracts. So we know what the, what is being done.
And do we have anything in writing that's what this request is that we're looking at? I mean, it's just based on what? Oral? Did we get something?
I know there, the request was put in writing.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Did we get it?
Presumably, and it would be presumably also posted to the website.
Okay. Then it was in a prior discussion we've had.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
And did, just as an aside. And did, just as an aside, did Hack take this up prior to the decision being filed?
It's my understanding that. It was appealed to Hack. Prior to our filing our decision. Um, I'm not clear. I, I believe that by the time the hearing was held. That our decision was available to them.
The only reason I ask that question is because in the last. Seminar they took, they were very specific and they said on any appeals to Hack, they can't do a formal appeal unless. They have a filed decision. So that's why I was checking. They don't have any. They have no legal power to take something out without having a decision filed, but they may have. Gotten our decision eventually and then. Filed it through, but I think we need to be very clear or get the information to know from town council. Did Hack accept this prior to a decision being filed?
And that's really what I was asking the question about is. This mediation piece. I, I remember what we got before, but I don't think we got anything on what was discussed or something. With town council and. And the hack? Did we? What you're just.
There's no information on the. Negotiations up at the hack.
Thank you, Ken. Yep.
Right.
I don't think we have that.
No.
That was my point.
Because Noreen, your, your original. Description of their requests was quite clear. And, you know, showed that somewhere between. Thirty-six point seven and forty-five percent increases in living area were being proposed in parts of these. Uh, structures.
Right, so.
Which by their own criteria, if I understand correctly, is not insubstantial.
Right, so. Part of what they had proposed as a bargain to the town was that they were willing to. Uh, drop the potential bonus room over the deck in the back and that they were not looking to go forward with that. Um, they were asking for. Four of the units, so that would be three markets and one affordable. To be amended to the second design. And now typically that would be something that would be approvable in that they are proposing it for. Three markets and one affordable. So not be a change that would be made to all the units, but it would be properly proportioned between market and affordable.
I just think we need all the information because we're dealing with the situation too. We already know that. There's been. There's been parts of our decision that haven't been complied with. I don't know if Hack knows anything about that. You know, there's been issues that you're aware of with. You know, all the weird building hours and hopefully that's been corrected, so that won't happen anymore. But. When you're dealing with these and they're giving generalities versus specifics, you have nothing to go on.
All right, so I think that's, that's where we stand. I'm just.
So how would you do this? TJ, would you do a, um. A, a no action requesting information or you do a continuation requesting? I don't know what the. I don't know what the format is on something like this. I don't know what the.
Right, um.
I mean, possibly what you could do here, I mean, this would obviously be subject to, uh, the developer's choice, but. You could. Request that they provide you with the various floor plan changes that they're intending. For your review and still consider that to be an insubstantial change. That you would review and vote.
So I guess we would request that they submit the floor plans that are related to the contracts of sale. So that we are able to review them to make a decision. If this is insubstantial or not. We may decide it's insubstantial, but without seeing the information.
The question is no longer whether it's insubstantial. Hack said it's insubstantial. That just means. We're not gonna have a public hearing on it. Doesn't mean we don't make some recommendation or decision regarding approval. We just don't open a hearing. Right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Right, so this is a little bit of. Maybe some uncharted territory for us. Um, and you know, like I said, certainly what we can do is ask. For the specific plans that show the changes, because obviously the original houses that were presented to you. Were all the same house, so there was no variation. And now they're proposing variations. Um, you know, you certainly can ask. And, you know, the floor plan for the four dwellings that will have that bonus room over the garage. Will show that and then presumably any changes that they make to. I presume the basement slash. Floor plan layouts, they could potentially identify the changes from what you had originally voted.
I think you need to get the plans for each individual sale contract. Because there may not be a. Four of these and two of those. There may be one of these, three of these, one of another one. So that's why you have to get the ones that actually are going with. The purchases and normally we wouldn't do that, but in this case they're all sold. So. They have to know what the changes are on each. Unit. If they're all the same, fine, but they're gonna have to send something in writing that this is unit number one, this is the layout, this is unit number two, this is the layout, this is unit number three, et cetera.
I, I agree, Bob.
Oh, just a suggestion, so.
Go ahead, Noreen.
Say if, if you. Think it's the rational way that you want to move forward. You may want to potentially continue this with that requested information. And I can certainly reach out to the developer or they may be monitoring the hearing. And, you know, request that for a specific date. And I presume if they don't want to provide that, then they will probably continue a conversation with Hack.
All right. So I, I, I think that's the most reasonable. Way to do this is just, uh. Have a continuance with the understanding of that requested information.
Can I just, just quickly, Noreen, once we do this. Can we have town council send what our decision is tonight on the continuance and why directly to Hack?
Um, I don't see why it would not be reasonable to.
Yeah, I just think.
Once the board determined.
Yeah, I think Hack should know that the reason we're doing this is we're not being supplied any information. What's, what's our next continual date that would be feasible?
I would presume it would have to be February fourth, because you're absolutely swamped for the twenty-first right now.
All right, so would anyone motion?
So I'd make a motion to continue to February fourth. But to ask the applicant to supply to us prior to that date. The individual plans for each individual unit that have already been contracted for sale, so we will have the information to make an informed decision.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob and second by Ken. Roll call vote. Ed?
Hey, Dan, you're an I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Mary?
Mary, Barry, I.
And TJ, hurry, I. All right, that takes care of that. Uh, on to board discussion. Anything? Happy twenty twenty-one.
Woo-hoo. Um, so I just one quick thing and, and we don't have time to discuss the whole thing tonight, but. Um, I think we need to come up with our own criteria regarding these kitchens, these cooking facilities. Uh. I know Mary's looked into it. I've looked at it. A lot of these towns use very specific descriptions and it doesn't just mean you don't have an oven. They put in there, there are no cooking appliances. You can't put in a specific kind of a. An outlet that would take, they would take, you know, ovens. There's situations where when they say it's a, a wet bar. Wet bars are three to four inch depth sinks. They're not full sinks. And if we're able to get a description like that, we can just plug it in in all the decisions and not worrying about going back and forth.
So the presentations are getting more ambiguous as it goes and as they catch fire, they get more prevalent.
Would that be more, uh, board policy or would that be, uh, amending?
Well.
Conditions, right?
I, yeah, I don't think we have to amend the bylaw. We would just come up with our own condition. When we restrict. Cooking facilities. We would actually have our own definition for it and we would actually put the definition in the condition. So let's say data restriction for cooking facilities and then we would have, this is what we are defining as cooking facility for this decision. Because you're seeing a lot of these units now that aren't connected to houses and we all know we live in a summer community. They're all converted over to apartments. And they're only doing it to get by the apartment bylaw because the apartment bylaw doesn't allow vacation rentals. Um. If, if this owner decides not to do it, that's fine, but everything gets sold in the future and everything changes and.
It's even more dangerous, it's even more dangerous if they start using hot plates and stuff like that.
Yeah.
In, in lieu of a, a, an oven and everything else to be on the QT, it makes it even more dangerous.
And a lot of these, yeah, a lot of these towns really do have a defined thing and, and, um, I mean, Mary will tell you, she looked at some of them too, even. Even these fridges they're putting in, you know, if, if, you know, they mentioned kitchenettes and stuff, not, it's not a full fridge. It's these mini, you know, these things which used to be mini bars are now turning into. You know, the sweets for everyone that wants to come and visit or somebody wants to work on the weekend. It's, it's different. And I, yeah.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
My, um. Thought was that it should be in both, TJ. It should be in our procedures as well as, or our. Whatever you, we call them. As well as in. Conditions, if you want to put them in there and if I'm correct and please. Correct me if I'm, I'm not. That should, that is as easy as we put, put it together and we vote on it. As a board.
I mean, I could certainly double check with town council to make sure that it's in line with the bylaw as well.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking to want a new bylaw. We would be putting it into. Our.
A redefinition of cooking facilities, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think we, I think we lost TJ.
Oh, he was having a connection issue. I wonder if he's in the attendees now. Maybe the cat got him.
Well, the vice chair's in his laboratory there. He can pick it up.
Ken, take over.
Okay. Take us home. Where, where were we?
Well, if we're done with that, I have a separate topic if we have a few minutes.
All right, we'll table the kitchens. But we will, we'll put that on a to-do list.
All right, I recognize Scott, so he can pursue his second.
Me, me, members of the board. Um. I called Noreen today extremely frustrated. Um, about lack of enforcement. Uh, of, of the conditions that we worked so hard to put forth on these. And, and maybe this is a little self-serving for myself, but I really take this serious and I put the time in. And I find it. I know we're in COVID and everything else, but everybody has a job to do. And far too many times we're finding out that our conditions aren't being upheld. And then when a report's put in about them, it's not being followed up on. So it's gonna get to a certain point. Um. Where, where it just doesn't matter anymore and it's gonna turn into the wild, wild west. And I asked her what. Her opinion of what we should do about it was and. What was that opinion, Noreen?
I don't recall.
Did you, did you say that we might want to have a meeting with Rod and you had spoken to Rod and he would be willing to speak with us about our concerns?
Okay, so yes, I, I did, um, suggest in the building commissioner had offered to meet with the board. Um, because there have been, as you point out, I wasn't necessarily thinking about enforcement, but there were a number of issues that have come up over time about. Flood zones and other things and I think. You know, just seemed to make sense to have a meeting with him, you know, over Zoom. To just sort of go through a bunch of the things that, that you've been questioning along the way or you need information about. Um, and you know, I for one am very curious about. Uh, a window being a second means of egress. Um, I was unaware. For an accessory unit, how a, a window would. Be that egress, but maybe you have something that you climb out on. I, I was picturing jumping the parachute and I didn't think that was appropriate, but.
You're exactly, you're exactly right, because in, in this, in this environment that we're in now. Um, everything's open for so, so broad of an interpretation that they use it against us. Because we don't have a direct line to him. About what he's actually telling these people and what their perception of what he's telling them are. And then they go forward with what they're going to do and then we have to decipher. What was said, how it went down. And then by that time, the horse is already out of the barn and then it just sets a precedent for the next application and I just. I wish there was a way we could get to a defined set of rules that we all play with.
I think you're on to something and why don't we invite the, the building commissioner to meet with us? I mean, I don't think it's just a COVID thing, frankly. It's been going on for years now. That enforcement has been lax.
And I'm sure, I mean, I don't know if it aggravates everybody else, but it really, really aggravates me.
It aggravates everyone.
Thank you. I'm done.
All right. All right, so, um, I will set up a meeting.
Then we lost them again?
Well, you said you were doing a job. He went to bed. All right.
I'd say that the, the lack of enforcement was long before. The, the current problem of the. You know.
COVID?
Yeah.
I was being a gentleman.
Enforcement goes back a long time.
Well, it would be nice to get a meeting and at least even if we all had one question like Noreen said to ask, it would at least solve six, six questions.
Yeah. Like I can see by Ken's screen, the night is over.
Usually we, we have these discussions at the conference table.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Ken's already there.
Well, they don't close till nine thirty. We still have twenty minutes, right?
Oh dear Lord.
Is there any further business? Let's see, what's next on the, uh?
Oh, there is one last thing, which I did send out to everybody, the, um, conflict of interest training.
Elizabeth is back up.
Thank you, thank you to my check guru.
Yeah, he changed gear.
We thought the cat got you, TJ.
No, no.
It was a coup, Ken.
I forgot to plug in the laptop.
It was, uh.
Then he got mad after that.
Yeah, climb the wall.
Okay, so, so TJ, just to update you, we have determined to set up a meeting with the building commissioner. Sure. Through a number of issues that have been raised. And the other thing I was reminding everybody is that I've recently sent out the conflict of interest law. Train that everybody needs to take annually and there is one individual who deserves an A plus for having already completed it. That would be Mr. James. So he's right on the new year. He's the first.
Congrats, James.
Yeah, so if everybody else.
Going to the dentist, I just want to get it over with.
Amen to that. So, uh, target goal is, uh, by the end of this month, please, because we have to provide that to the town. To show that you indeed are up to date.
Very good.
When does that have to be in?
Uh, preferably by the end of this month, please.
Okay.
All right, so, um. I, I guess you guys went through everything? Board updates, future agenda items, anything?
Your future, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll watch the playback, Scott.
It'll be too late by then, T.
All right, anything else? All right, uh, we will see everyone back January twenty-first here at.
Nine ten, not too bad.
Yeah.
Not bad, not bad at all.
Pretty good.
Good job.
All right, meeting adjourned. See everyone. All right, meeting adjourned. See everyone soon.
See you guys.
Thank you. Happy.